Well, maybe we should just get started then at 6:01. And we're recording. So, let's begin the November 7th Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting. 6:01 PM. Let's start with just any announcements, get those out of the way if anyone has any. I don't personally, I don't think. Anyone else? Sue, do you have any?
I don't have any announcements for you today.
Nothing new with the bike pet plan? Am I having a brain?
We're planning a public meeting at the end of the month. I think it's November 28th. But I've got to get a press release out. I have a meeting with a consultant tomorrow, so.
Okay.
It'll be the second public meeting for that.
Okay.
Yep. I will make sure to send it to all of you.
Okay, great. Any advancement with the downtown parking lot and garage signage you guys on DPW?
No, that's going to be over the winter.
Okay.
When the construction season has ended for public works.
Okay, alright, great, that makes sense. Not seeing any other announcements. Let's move on to the minutes of October 3rd. If I get a motion, then we can entertain any edits. Yep, Todd makes that motion. I can't see anyone on the screen, so I'll just... Oh, Prudence hands up, so she seconds. Any comments with the minutes? I'll just say on the... Oh, Prudence.
Just one little thing. On the first paragraph on the second page.
Yep.
It seemed like there was a word missing in that second sentence.
Brandy Saxton said that feasibility and likelihood of development when determining districts. I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't even know what that word might be. There might be a few words missing.
I can't remember, but I can check the tape and fix it unless Brandy remembers.
Consider maybe or something?
I think it was considered, yeah.
Are considered, yeah.
And I'll just say in the sentence before that, that for me, when it says felt that natural resource protection standards could be a useful check. I mean, I do agree with that, but what I said was that I recall saying that I thought sometimes those standards paint too broad of a brush for restricting development. I'm not totally certain if that's actual, factually how the regs are, but that's my impression without going into it more, and that's what I said, so. So, resource protection standards are sometimes a broad or a broad brush on development. We could change that. That's my memory. So, with those two edits, how do people vote? All those in favor? Okay, that's all five of us, great. Okay, moving on to Brandy's part here with the bylaw modernization grant. Brandy has some proposals for us. And questions.
Okay.
Welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Is it helpful for me to put this up on the screen? Or does everyone have in front of them the memo that I sent on the 3rd of November?
How about hands up if you want it on the screen, no hands if you're fine without it?
Okay. That seems like no on the screen, which is actually good. It's a lot easier for me to actually see you guys and the material, so that's good. So, chunk of material that you received, I want to give a little bit of context to it and give you some sense of how this would sit in the regulations. And then we can go through some of the site plan components that are laid out here in the beginning of the memo and then walk through those housing types. And, you know, feel free to get my attention one way or another and ask questions or make comments as we go along. So, the intent of this language would be, and we haven't completely decided on the best place to sort of set this into the existing regs. We've kind of got two potential locations where it could sit. But it would function essentially as an overlay zoning district or very either it would be an overlay zoning district or it would function largely the same. And would the standards of this infill housing set of provisions would take precedence over the underlying zoning district standards? It would apply in the developed zoning districts where there's water and sewer service. So, that's the residential neighborhood and the mid-dues center, the neighborhood center, service center, urban center, those zoning districts. It wouldn't apply in the rural zoning districts. And the idea is to allow for small multi-unit infill. And to, while your regulations in many ways do allow for this, there are some ways in which the administrative process is more complicated for some of these options or there are some things that are a little less than, you know, not particularly clear in the regulations that people may not be thinking that they could actually get to those outcomes with the regulations that they're written or there may be some questions. So, the idea is to try to create a much more clear path that's administrative process. So, it would need to go to the developer review board for hearings. And that would, in some ways, help raise the visibility of these housing choices and options for people to think about trying to infill within these existing neighborhoods in town. So, in some cases, these are not really new options that you couldn't currently do under your current rules. This should hopefully simplify some of these processes and may remove some standards that were currently applied and have some different dimensional requirements. But we're hoping to simplify. So, does that make sense to everyone?
Okay.
So, when we talked last time, I think we did briefly touch on the notion of the site plan review process and in terms of what gets reviewed, what the processes are, et cetera. So, just as a refresher on that. So, site plan review applies to everything other than single and two-unit dwellings and that's, those are exempted by statute. So, there's sections in your current regulations that set up various site plan standards. So, we'll walk through, those are kind of identified here. And I did throw in stormwater as well, and that's not in the same section. And site standards is an important site component, so we'll talk about that one too. The site plan review is broken out into minor projects and major projects. Yep, we'll do those sets out of the regs for a while. The minor projects are things that the zoning administrator can approve and that don't go to the DRV for a hearing. And the major projects can have to go to the DRV for a hearing. And so, each of these site plan sections tends to have a applicability statement within them. And so, that tells you what types of projects those standards apply to. So, I run through the relevant ones here and then sort of indicated what's applying where. So, we can start to get some sense of if you did, were a property owner and you were wanting to infill with some small scale, with things like old housing, what pieces of the current regulation would apply to your project. So, the first of those is access and circulation. So, this is primarily vehicular access. It also speaks to pedestrian access as well to some extent in this section. But for the purposes here, we're focusing on the vehicular part. The recommendation would be to continue to allow vehicular access from a driveway. Right now, you have a standard that triggers a street. The requirement to have a street for access after so many lots. And so, there's a, if someone was doing a project where, you know, they're going to do something like the townhouse option and wanted to put actual lots, you know, for each of those townhouse units, that might exceed, would exceed the three lot number for driveway access. And put that project into the requirements for a street to provide access. So, that component would be something to look at. Keeping that to a driveway, no matter how do you, you know, if you're within that nine units and whether you make lots or don't make lots, more of that actually matter. And then, like I said, this section also deals with pedestrian access. That language is part of what makes it eligible for an NDA. And so, we need to retain that language for your neighborhood development area eligibility. It basically requires that if a sidewalk is missing on the property, that, you know, sidewalk be retained and added if it's missing. Most instances, obviously, in your existing neighborhood, that would be a retention of what's there. And if there was a connecting piece and there was a gap, it would be, that's when that requirement to build sidewalk would get triggered. So, the next section deals with streets and driveways. Met with Sue and Steven and Brian. And now, we have to move around and get some input from the fire department on these issues. There are, there's a set of design standards for driveways. In the regulations, there's a different, sort of a tier. There are different tiers of what's required. Obviously, in these settings, most of these driveways are going to be relatively short. From the fire department's perspective, they should be able to set up their equipment and respond to any emergency that they need to respond to largely from the street. So, that idea of the driveway that has space for fire turnaround and pull-offs and things like that, it really becomes much more of a concern with a long driveway than it does if the driveways are short. So, we think we might be able to refine that language a little bit more while keeping within what the fire department feels is necessary for public safety. But basically, the idea is to try to keep the driveways as narrow as we can and allow existing driveways to be used sort of as they are to the extent possible as well, if you were to add more housing to a lot.
Brandy, can I ask a question? Just stepping back, just in general, about infill housing being a minor site plan. So, if we go, if we just jump ahead quickly to page three, that has a list of like seven or eight or nine, whatever that is, types of infill, missing middle housing, right? So, if a lot was vacant and someone built a principal, you know, primary, you know, single-family dwelling, that would be a major site plan, right? But then, if in the backyard, someone builds a mansion apartment building, that would be a minor site plan?
No, the single unit building would not compare any like that.
Oh, right, because there's an exemption for that, right, 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 the first and two.
Yeah.
So, if someone built a three unit, that would be a major site plan. But then, if in the backyard, they build a mansion apartment building, that would be a minor site plan?
No, you'd be able to do the initial three unit project through this section. So, it would come through as a minor. So, this isn't, so infill doesn't mean that the lot is already developed.
Right, right.
Infill is sort of more broadly means that it's going into the generally developed neighborhoods.
I see, so, yeah.
Because we know there are some vacant lots in those neighborhoods. Obviously, not a huge number, but some.
Yeah.
And so, those vacant lots could be developed through this provision as well. So, it wouldn't just have to be in addition to an already developed lot.
So, unway, I think, you know, not that, you know, we are the planning commission, we decide these, you know, ultimately the select board does. But at the joint meeting, it was brought up to the DRV, like what do you guys think of, you know, making a lot of residential, take not a major site plan but a minor? And not every DRV member spoke to it, but I think a couple said, oh, no, no, we'd like to retain that review. So, I mean, just for everyone's knowledge, just to know that they felt that way. And it seems like this would, for better or worse, I don't know. I'm just, you know, just sharing that. That this would, you know, make almost all residential, right? In the six developed districts or five developed districts, administrative review, right? The DRV would no longer be reviewing it?
If they kept to the unit numbers, yep.
Right, okay.
Which this would go up to nine as it's kind of laid out at this point.
Okay.
So, it would take a larger building than that to trigger major site plan. Unless there was something particular about the piece of property. So, like your point from previous meeting around natural resource issues. So, properties that have steep slopes, for instance, don't require some additional approvals. So, this wouldn't necessarily get you out of having to deal with some of those pieces. But if you didn't have some other reason to get before the DRV, the new unit number here would be the trigger.
Okay. Yeah, I just felt that was, you know, kind of an important contextual thing to give context to all of this, but. Anyway, if, does anyone else have any questions where, you know, where we are so far? Before Brandy continues? No, okay.
Dan, Dan can just handle.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
I thought I had the right document open, but my page three might not be the same as your page three. But if you wouldn't mind, could you possibly show the page you're talking about?
Sue, I don't have sharing. Yeah, I can do that. Dan, would it be helpful if I also emailed it to you?
Sure, I think I'm looking at it, but yeah, that'd be great, sure.
Okay.
It's the page that says section 111 on it? Of the MM infill memo. And I guess while we're pausing here, Brandy, is a back house kind of like an ADU? But without like the 900-foot, you know, limit? 900 square foot?
Yeah, so the back house option would allow for a second detached dwelling that wouldn't have, you know, wouldn't have the owner occupancy or sort of joint, or even necessarily the joint ownership, you know, the one's primary, one's secondary relationship. It would just be, you could have two.
Yeah.
You know, when we were on the walk, we saw a couple of properties that had more than one dwelling on them. I think we saw maybe two or three of those on the walk. They are, some of them were in different ownership or, you know, different ways of being lived in when they were rentals or ownership units. So, this would provide a little more flexibility than the ADU language. It could be quite good for some of the lots that you can find in neighborhoods where there's a fairly deep lot. There's some three lots in a couple of the neighborhoods that have frontage on two streets or are just, you know, fairly narrow but quite deep. So, those would, it would open up that option or make that option more apparent to people.
I see.
So, I think you should, oh, Sue, go ahead.
Oh, no, I just wanted to comment on Tom's comment about DRV. So, yeah, it's a joint meeting. We did discuss this, Steve had kind of was trying to suss out their feeling for it. What I would say is we didn't break it down as to whether or not it was conditional use or whether it was major site plan. I think they kind of went with the, well, if it's more than three units, it's commercial use, so we should review it. And I think the question for the planning commission is what is the purpose of the review? You know, if we're trying to create housing and break down barriers, if you throw it into conditional use, then that brings up, you know, character of the neighborhood and how is that viewed? And then, if you keep it in a major site plan review, there's a lot more of the standards that apply. So, I think staff's, you know, personal opinion is that those can be barriers and that would have cost to the housing. And that, you know, the zoning administrator has the capability of making sure that what is required is there. So, that's where staff's point of view is coming on that issue.
And I, I would think, so I would echo on that that with the change to statute for the ability to apply character of the area to three and four unit buildings, it's an even greater reason for taking it out of DRV review and putting it into administrative review. Because we know that most of the comments that the DRV will hear during a public hearing are probably going to relate to character of the area or parking. So, the, you know, those character of the area concerns are really no longer really able to be addressed for three and four units. And, you know, for the DRV, that's actually kind of challenging that to be put in a position of hearing from the community but then having to basically disregard their concerns, you know, and those are likely to be kind of the focal point of what they hear most in many applications. So, that can be a bit difficult. So, you know, without that component to be weighing, they don't have as much discretion, which is what they're, you're holding the hearing about is that this is a discretionary decision. And they just now have a lot less discretion. So, do we want to leave this up on the screen? Or Dan, have we found where?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
I have a question while we're on the subject. You just mentioned three units is commercial. That's not typical, you know. I don't know why that keeps being used. Usually, up to four is still considered non-commercial.
Yeah, I may have misspoke. I can't remember, a lot of times, it's the, it's about the waste, you know, whether or not they're getting trash service from the municipality or whether, that's often how it's talked about in town. So, it might be four, and I just misspoke.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to, we talked about streets and driveways. So, parking and loading is at the bottom of page one of the memo. So, this section, remember that you've already, within the urban center district, basically exempted development there from providing parking. So, that is one of those tweaks there in the applicability section. So, you're requiring the one off-street space. Right now, shared parking has to be within 600 feet. You can do tandem parking, so parking, one vehicle parking the other in four multi-unit housing. But parked vehicles do need to be able to turn around and get back out onto the street unless they're backing out. Then, there's a requirement that parking areas with more than 10 spaces, some way demarcate the spaces. So, if they're hard surface, then you obviously line them. They're not hard surface or other techniques you can use to try to indicate where the parking spaces are. And there is required screening from adjoining residential lot to the side rear. So, the ways that I'm thinking that you could address some of the challenges that properties face with meeting the parking requirement would be to expand the opportunity for the shared and off-site parking. So, make that further out than 600 feet so that you're getting a larger potential area where people could get off-site parking. And extend that no turning of, you know, the, you don't need to be able to turn the car around component to three and four unit properties. So, that would allow for a more compact parking space area for the threes and fours. And then, let the parking area, the structures go close to the lot lines. With, I would say keeping the privacy fencing to the adjoining neighbors. That, I think that's a good mitigation strategy and not particularly expensive to implement. You know, it can be quite a point of tension between neighbors if you've got vehicles coming in with their lights, you know, heading into parking, shining their lights into an adjoining, the windows of the adjoining house and such, and hours that people in the adjoining house would prefer to have darkness. So, that's one thing that could help there.
And Brandy, that, that buffer fence or wall currently applies to how many units and above? And what are you proposing it would apply to?
So, the, there is buffering standards. They vary somewhat based on what district you're in. So, that if you go to the buffer section, which you kind of get shutted to from the parking and loading section, you'll find that there's a table that sets up buffer requirements based on the distance, you know, based on which districts are running each other. So, if you're both in the residential neighborhood district, there might be one set of requirements for buffering. Whereas if it's in the residential neighborhood and it's running up to the service center, there might be a different set of buffer requirements. But I think we can reduce those distances, which they can be up to 10 feet, I think, in some of those contexts with the provision for the fencing. So, you're allowed to come, you know, very close in, but keep the fence.
I see.
So, yeah, if I just looked to the top of the next page, I would have found one of the answers to your question. So, my memory was correct. Residential neighborhood, a residential neighborhood required a 10-foot buffer. For, but that's just for major site plan application. So, this is one of the things we're getting that out of, getting these projects out of major site plan category will mean that this buffer and screening section will also not apply. Sue, the, there's also one name.
That's you, Sue.
Oh, Prudence is.
That's you. Prudence has her name up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't do that, Prudence.
You're muted.
Okay, you muted, Prudence.
Sorry, so on the parking, so there's a one off-site spot required per unit, but we're, you're suggesting that we increase that to basically a quarter of a mile? It could be like a lot that was a quarter of a mile away?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that seems far to me, but is that fairly typical in some other places?
You know, I think it could work for some people. And it's probably not going to be something that everyone is going to necessarily find desirable or enjoyable if they, if they have to do that. I mean, you also have the ability to park on the street to some extent. So, the parking, you know, is really your overnight option, right? To put the car, so you can still, you know, have the ability to, you know, you got to move, bringing your groceries, you know, pulling up to the street and parking on the street in front of your residence, helping get groceries, doing those kind of things. But that you could have that overnight parking option. You know, essentially, that's what you're doing in the urban center district where people are parking in the, you know, garage or one of the public parking lots where they're overnight parking these.
And that would say that for, you know, most, well, at least half of the year, on-street overnight parking is allowed, so. It's the winter months.
Was there anything else, Prudence?
No.
No, thanks.
You were, you looked deep at that. I thought you were about to say something else. So
I was just making it out, sorry.
No, that's good. I didn't want to cut you off. The landscaping piece, this applies to all the vulnerable subject to site plan approval. But there's a higher bar. We have to have a professional plan and it's a major project. So by keeping these minor, that keeps us out of needing to have a professional landscaping plan. There are requirements for street tree planting, front yard planting, building landscaping, which is basically planting around the perimeter of the building. If it's a larger building, and parking lot landscaping. The street tree requirements need to be kept for the NVA eligibility. The front yard landscaping and the parking lot landscaping have sort of broader neighborhood benefits. The building landscaping requirement seems to be the least necessary or, you know, having a broader benefit off the property. So if we want to reduce that landscaping component, that would be the first thing I would recommend eliminating that. For a larger buildings, in many cases, I would expect the buildings that you might get from the same without housing aren't necessarily. You could go to a tree in the first place, they could have a footprint that's under three thousand square feet quite easily. But if you did have larger buildings come in, then it would be subject to this building landscaping piece. So, you know, existing landscaping counts. So if you've got some existing landscaping, you're probably not necessarily going to have to add much, if any. There is a standard for the parking lot landscaping, sort of speaks to how much of the parking lot is 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 shaded by by tree, you know, by trees in the vicinity. It's not necessarily a standard that's going to require kind of putting in planted islands or anything like that. More just planting some trees around the perimeter of the parking area.
Brandy, about landscaping, just in general, I forget, I didn't really review this beforehand, but it's just a general thing, not necessarily about missing metal or middle housing. But do our landscaping section of the regs give any preference or bonus or incentive to evergreens versus deciduous? Because, you know, the deciduous don't really buffer seven months of the year.
There is some speaking to that in the buffer section. But the landscaping piece is set up to encourage mixed plantings. So a mix of shrubs and trees and potentially sun covers as well. So hopefully you get some evergreens and some, you know, cinders in that mix. But it is not necessarily set up to promote, you know, cedar hedges, for instance, or arborvitae hedge.
Yeah. Right. All right, just something I've been thinking about. I don't really have a position on it at this time, but okay.
Yeah, the the landscaping section really does provide people that pretty good amount of flexibility around meeting the rules because you're kind of allowed to choose a mix of plant materials that you would want to see on the site. So there's a way, which is quantitative, so if you plant big shrubs versus, you know, trees, you can put in more big shrubs to equal a lesser number of trees or, you know, things like that. So there's an overall number you need to meet, but you can get there by using different types of materials.
Yeah, and sometimes the landscaping isn't, you know, it it isn't solely for privacy, right? So the leaves don't matter. It's just to to bring nature into our to our environment, so.
Right, I think in terms of thinking about balancing your goals between healthy creation and neighborhood character, the landscaping piece is one to think about. It is a way to to keep that streetscape
Yep.
piece going that might make adding more housing into existing neighborhoods more palatable for more for more people. You know, so that's, you know, if you're kind of thinking through the the pros and cons of various requirements, I would say that one of the major things the landscaping components do is to sort of soften that parking mobility to some degree and maintain that streetscape component in the neighborhood.
Okay.
So the site standards carry on. There's there's language in there about fences and walls that that applies if you're building a fence or a wall. It's just some basic standards about, you know, how to fence us and things like that. I don't think there's really any need to do anything with that. It's it's fairly standard. Like, which also applies to single and two-unit properties as well. Outdoor lighting, there is an exemption for low intensity lights on single and two-unit properties. Major site plans, once again, require a professional lighting plan, just like the landscaping component. And then there's a requirement that previously developed sites be brought into conformance when they are bringing in an application that requires site plan approval. So if you make this minor, you won't need the professional lighting plan. But keeping the rest of the components in there, I think, is another way to sort of avoid some of those potential neighbor conflict issues. Even the bringing lighting into conformance, sometimes that's as simple as just reaining the existing lights so that they focus downward a little bit more and a little bit less outward, you know, to adjoining properties. Or in some cases, it's not that difficult to put some sort of a shield or a hood on an existing light fixture or or swap something out. So, you know, this is is one of those that probably isn't a big lift for for most property owners who'd be doing the projects. There's language on outdoor storage and display that applies to all development, so it also applies to single and twos. So probably doesn't make any sense to carve out leave in here or just leave that language alone. There there's just some requirements about screening personal property that's going to be stored outside from adjoining residential properties. And then the one additional one I threw in here was stormwater. This one's actually a natural resource, so standard that you put the rest of those natural resources in here. But the stormwater management's more of a site plan issue anyway. And these standards do apply to bond development again, so it also applies to single and twos. There's choices that a property owner who's putting in multi-unit residential building can meet the low-impact development, low-impact development standard. So if there's enough green space on the property, where stormwater can be directed to, they can, they might not have to do much of anything other than, you know, direct the water to those green, existing green spaces. If the green spaces aren't adequate, there are green stormwater infrastructure, GSI practices that could be used. Things like rain guidance or buffers that are planted to absorb the stormwater. So the report from your zoning administrator was that this section is working and there's not, doesn't seem to be a barrier. There isn't any requirement for professional plans. And, you know, there are options that are fairly simple at low cost to implement here. So that gets us through the the site plan standards so you can better sense of the types of adjustments being considered there. And then we come to, starting on page three, the language in progress that will get added to your regulations. So we've got two, as I said before, two potential places where this could sit in the regulations, either in the development itself or in the overlay zoning district section. But we'll deal with that. And then the the section will renumber automatically in case you have a question as to why it's one eleven. It's one eleven because it's sitting all by itself. When it gets dropped into the document, it will it will renumber itself to whatever section it's supposed to be. So this would allow that creation of missing metal, so that's a grocery of purpose statement. And then it does the eligibility and it runs through, you can infill with these missing metal housing terms. And so it lists those types. These go up to nine units. We had some discussion during the staff work session I had about what the upper limit should be. In the end, we landed on nine. There's some rationale in relation to Act 250 for why nine is a good upper limit. There's also sort of thinking about the overall scale of the buildings. And really, the idea is to keep these scaling these buildings to something that is more compatible with the mix of buildings that are already in these neighborhoods. And so, you know, when you get up to the larger three, four-story, twenty, thirty, forty unit buildings, you're obviously at a different scale of building than than you are when you're looking at buildings that were one and two and maybe seven unit apartment houses historically. So that's the rationale behind nine. And then we walk through the site plan reviews. This is where we would walk through the things that are going to get exempted out, which is sort of a run-through of what we just talked about. There's some flexibility in here for the particular access, for industrial access that we talked about. The one thing we didn't talk about before was the idea of what if you are able to put in some sort of a new building that includes the parking either within the structure. So either it's garage, you know, it's garage in some manner or under-boned parking, something like that. And so that provides for that as well. I see Dan has his hand up.
Yeah, hi, thanks. I just wanted to, before we leave the number of units question, I don't know where this fits, but I seem to remember seeing in the the prior discussions that our maximum number of stories above grade was going to be three. Is is that going along with the number of units? Or is there another place where we can discuss the the maximum height issue?
Yes. The the various building types have heights that go along with them. Three, I think most of them do max out at three. That's a thing we can we can talk about. That it doesn't mean that it's not possible to get, because in some of those districts, you can obviously have four, five, six-story buildings, but they're not going to come in through the sort of simplified administrative review avenue in the regulations. They would have to go through basically the avenues that currently exist for those multi-unit buildings. But we'll we'll touch more on height as we proceed through. So, so yeah, so within the parking, which is on the top of of page four, there is some provision. So if you are going to get the parking within or under the building, that the lot area could be reduced. Dimensions of the lot could be reduced, recognizing that you're not going to have to have additional surface area for vehicle parking. And then paragraph D here is an important key. So there is another section of the regulation, the section three oh three, that has a set of standards that applies to multi-unit buildings. And this set of standards would replace those. So those standards would not be applied to housing approved under these, under that situation. And then there would also be flexibility for creating lots in a missing metal project. We suspect that that would probably be most often, we don't sort of have a footprint lot. But in the case of townhouses, it could be that it could be more conventional lots created. So the one piece that's we've been at the bottom of page four, there's discussion of forms of access. The other piece that's not done with this yet, but I still need to finish out and get to you, will illustrate and provide dimensional requirements for the access. So it'll be done based on the type of lot and the type of access. So if you just have a standard lot, normal street frontage. If you have a corner lot or you have a through lot where you have frontage, front and back on different streets. Or a back lot, maybe a lot that doesn't have any frontage of its own. You'd get to it, you know, usually through an easement from from another lot. And then we can look at shared access. So if the access is going to be coming in from the, from a lot on the side, so from one of your neighbors to the side, or that access might be coming in from the lot behind you. So those will have examples of how to provide access under those various scenarios. So then what starts up is a series of tables, sort of diagrams with dimensional standards, a little schematic plan view that shows roughly to scale what this looks like. And then many of them have photos and there's going to be some building form diagrams that get added as well that will deal with things like story height, you know, story, number of stories and how the buildings are structured. And some of them are stacked units where each floor is a separate unit, where some of them are multi-story units attached on the side. Those will get shown. So first one we start with is the back house. You talked a little bit about that already, just the idea of building into the rear behind something that exists.
Brandy. Do we, forgive me for not knowing this, do our land use regs currently have such requirements for minimum lot width and depth and like where things are and amount of space for parking? You know, for for residential situations, is this kind of stricter?
Generally, yes. So there are frontage requirements.
Right.
There's minimum lot size requirements, which if you have a frontage requirement and a minimum lot size requirement, then really you have a depth too. Because you need lot, you know, you need width times depth to get to air gap.
Yeah, but that's not how this
There's slightly different ways of measuring, yeah.
But but is that how this width and depth are determined? Doesn't seem to be.
So these would, that, this width and depth would replace the the lot, the minimum lot size requirement. So basically, if you can demonstrate that you can meet this minimum lot width and this minimum lot depth, then you are, you you your property could be developed with this form of infill housing. So these vary, some of them, you know, I think probably the widths go down like a forty, a little bit, maybe a little bit under forty feet up to hundred for the attached townhouses. So they are responsive to the scale of the building. yeah, hundred for the attached townhouses. Um, so they are responsive to the scale of the building in way. Um, depending whether you have the space to sort of get that in. Um, and this is sort of a form-based approach, so um, this is kind of the underlying principle of the missing metal concept is to go away from density um and units per acre, but um that some standards have brought the sort of scale of the buildings and and location of the building. And so this is is really good with that.
So So, um, but do you think that there's feasible, um, you know, and adequate and and decent um um building layouts and housing for people and, you know, dimensions and and layouts that that would work fine um for some people in some situations, but but these like numbers of width and depth and such would prevent that?
You know, is it possible that something is not going to meet the standards? Certainly. I think, you know, you you can't you can't zone for every individual. He's a property in specific dimensional and physical characteristics. And so you may end up with something that falls outside the box. But this provides um a lot of different uh options. And it's also one avenue, it is not the only avenue for a potential property owner to do something with their property um in way of creating additional housing. So if one of these options doesn't fit, they still may be able to sort of take that conventional route and use the underlying zoning district standards and site plan
Right.
standards that apply and and add housing to their property. Um, so
Right.
I think you do want to leave some. Um, so I guess the the give and take here, maybe this is better way to say it, the give and take that you're getting here is that you're getting rid of that DRB discretionary review piece and you're going to something that zoning administrator can administer, which has to be more yes no, in a way, right? So dimensionally, does this project fall into this box? Yes, okay, then you can just see.
So it's kind of like pre-approved templates?
Whereas Yes, they are kind of pre-approved templates. If you end up in front of the DRB, DRB could be like, well, okay. We see that, you know, because you're going to be really close to this parking line over here, or we're looking at the neighborhood, so we could we could condition the property, right, to to address the the issue of that. The zoning administrator can't act like that. Um, the zoning administrator basically is much more of a yes no answer. Um, so that's that's exactly that, very much, because these are kind of templates. And if you can fit one of the templates, you have this fairly simple um permitting path forwarding.
I see, that's helpful. Thank you for explaining that.
Okay, so if we step um through these, you can sort of start to get a sense of of how they work. Um, so we we move into the duplex. So you'll see that page six and page seven are both duplex um options. So one is a side-by-side duplex option. Um, you know, obviously recognize these building types um and find the building types um that exist in Brattleboro. Um, and then, you know, with with this type of duplex, you know, each unit has their own door, private entrance. Um, they may be two level um units, um but each of them generally has a street-facing front door. In the stacked one, you have up and down units, right? So you have a first floor unit and a second floor unit. Sometimes there's a common, you know, entryway, you go into a vested dual and there, you know, there are doors to each unit when going to the stairs you go up. Uh, one doorway is straight into a ground level unit. In other cases, you might have um exterior stairs um actually within the unit. And then the same thing happens again. We get pages eight and nine, we go through triplets, either side-by-sides or stacked. Um, as we start to go up here, so you're starting to see the 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 stacked triplets, the height goes up to three stories. Um, recognizing that each floor level is a big unit. And then um, we do the same thing again with the fours. So you could have a fourplex arranged so that all four units have ground level space and entries. Um, or you can do it in a stacked form where essentially it's an even duplex, you just double the duplex, right, you step to two below, two above. And in many ways, that building form is quite familiar. Two duplex. Dan?
Yeah, so uh on uh page nine, I mean, essentially, I I see what you're getting at as far as three stories maximum height, but one of the pictures shows something that could be interpreted as four with the attic.
Yeah, so this is something that because it is going to sort of form-based code statusing, um, will need some definition. Um, so the what's listed here is meant to be full stories. So it wouldn't prevent, say, where it says two full stories from having two and a half. So having space under the roof pitch, right? Um, and then we do need to address, given that in Brattleboro there's a lot of slope, uh, so that's that's built into the hill. And your current height measurements do address that already to some extent, but we'll need to make sure that this fits in. You already do have language that that addresses stories because you have other zoning districts that use stories as a minimum?
We actually do have a definition of story. That's what I was pulling out as you were walking through that. It means a portion of a building between the surface of any floor and the ceiling above it. Attics and basements are not considered stories for the purposes of measuring building height.
Yeah, and we might need to refine that a little bit further because I think where we've used it in the regulations before is a minimum story height question, and here we've got a maximum. And so that question of can it be, you know, two and a half or or something like that um would need to be addressed as well. But um, I can say that from the point of view of of how architects, this this kind of coding comes from architects. So this this notion of there being given a full story, full height story.
I I understand that if if it is an attic, then it's not necessarily a story, but that picture, for example, is a good example of where a studio or two could be built in that so-called attic space. So I I guess I'm just curious why, you know, but, you know, or if we can discuss what the maximum uh number of stories should be.
I think that's certainly something to to be discussed. I'll I'll say that the building types tend to have a story that goes along with them with the idea of of keeping a dimensional scale. Um, so, you know, two, three stories, I think is probably units. In most of the neighborhoods in Brattleboro and obviously where you got that building kind of built into the slope, you actually maybe end up, there's more possibilities. Um, and then of course, some of these, like the stacked ones, are really a response where each levels a unit. So if it's a if it's a triple decker, it's it's three stories. If you then want to have stuff up in the attic in your, you know, underground, you maybe got a, you know, a little bit of space up in there, you've actually now upped it probably from three units to to five or something like that. So you're in a different building type, that's why.
So Randy, yeah, this is a quick question. So a lot of people have converted their attics into rooms or bedrooms, so that's not considered a story, correct? If this converted or made into?
To, it it um, the refinement that would need to be made to the definition that Sue wrote out is to discuss um the the ceiling height piece. So generally how, when I say, well, it could be two and a half, um, and that's sort of getting at that attic uh question or the the space that's under the pitch of the roof. Um, if you think about how much of that space is at full ceiling height, um, so, you know, I'm like, you know, if you think about your gable roof and then, you know, a floor there and then the the full height of the ceiling, so
Right.
you know, it should be, you're not going to have a full floor area at that full height, right? You're going to have the B wall face where, you know, your your, as the gable is coming down. Um, so, you know, ends up being some more specific definitions around, you know, how much of that floor area at full building height
Mm-hmm.
triggers the counting as a another additional story. And if, you know, in this instance, if it's going to be less than the full footprint at full height, then it's not going to count as a story.
Okay.
Thank you.
That makes sense.
Okay, if it's not the full footprint of the rest of the building, then it's not a story.
Then it's not going to hit the story level yet. And it's going to need a little bit of refinement to the height definition and
You can picture a structure that that looks like a wedding cake that goes up up a thousand feet.
Like a cathedral type.
The building issues would happen that, but uh I don't think you're going to get too many wedding cake tower buildings.
So 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 it would be like a
It's an interesting concept.
So it would be like a cathedral type of uh
Yeah. You still have an overall provision, I think, but that's that's a a maximum of like fifty feet or something that that is is townwide. So you have some some maximums of your seventy feet, I think.
That's good. Thank you. Anyway, Brad, that's interesting because like I said, there's a lot of conversions going on. So I just, it gives me a better scope on how to look at it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's more stuff that comes in once you get to building code around the use of space in outdoor basements, um, as hattable space because there are some requirements for egress and and things like that that need to be met. So um, there there are some things that are covered by code.
So as we Hey, Randy, sorry before we move off the um uh max, sorry, I was just noting noticing the document on page fifteen, you're so you're listing, you know, all these uh numbers and whatnot, but some of them are not in the same order as the other pages. So just maybe, you know, for final draft, making sure they're all
Yep.
um, you know, in the same order for each type, if that's
Okay, yes, some of them, some of them have different sets. So they they have a dimension to get them kind of aligned as I was So um if we're carrying, if we're going to back up on page twelve and we're continuing to walk through the housing type, um, the next one we come up up to are the townhouse type. So twelve and thirteen are townhouse types. Um, the first one are just side-by-side, so conventional sort of townhouses that, you know, are familiar with, with the concept. Um, so because we've done two, three, four, these are basically five and up, right? Um, otherwise it'd be one of the elderly types. Um, so five to nine units, they're up to two stories. And then we get to the stacked version. This is probably a bit more of a contemporary, sort of urban style um building type. And they often have the car underneath them. Um, so they're pretty compact in that way. Um, and then it have two um, two units, usually in three or four, depending on sort of how they're set up and how the um site is set up. And sometimes it take advantage of the slope to pull out the car we need. And sometimes they're just, the car is just internal. Um, so usually each unit ends up with um living spaces on two levels. Um, and um, that's the configuration of those. Probably a bit bigger in scale than um a lot of what you see in the neighborhood. This is really sort of a transitional one where you can see it fitting into the the service center or neighborhood center with use areas probably a little more feasibly than finding a you know, more of a commercial neighborhood that are probably going to be big enough to host something like this. And then we go down to cottages, then we go to the other end of the building, side factory. Um, and there's provisions for both cottage courts where the cottages are oriented to face each other with a green space and and sidewalk type access in the middle. Um, and then just an individual row on that. So if there was a narrow um lot, you could slide in into um in 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 this mirror into the lot. Depth was, um, so these actually do with the height of one and a half stories. That tends to be um pre-stated practice for cottage-type um developments. They are um generally more with a gable roof, having a little bit of space up underneath there. Um, and they tend to be oriented towards stable level living. So usually the space is up. Um, in half-story, it tends to be a, you know, a psychic bedroom, something like that, some locked space.
So what's an example of a cottage court? I was just looking for a picture, just to get a purview.
Yes, I'm sorry. There's a picture of that um in there. Um, so cottage, I don't know if we can get it in there, cottage courts. Um, probably the the best visual to think about is if you think about the um old tourist um cottage or camp type thing where, you know, you instead of a hotel, you, you know, you rent a cottage or a little camp structure.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
So if you kind of think about that building form, there's something not that much bigger than that, maybe a little bit, but usually not much bigger than that. Um, and they are often oriented, you know, being they're shown oriented facing each other, you might end up something with a kind of a U shape or a quad shaped orientation. So they have a common green space at the middle. Um, and they often have front porches, you know, sort of orienting toward that green space. Um, they've been very popular out in the Pacific Northwest as senior housing, um, sort of retirement villages. Um, you might come to them. And so I have a lot of photos of these types of developments from out there and all the gardens are just stunning. So you have to take the gardens in the middle, rain falls in the new England there. And you're probably not going to attain this this outcome uh quite as easily. But there's a couple of these projects um around Brattleboro that have been built in like the last ten years or so. Um, and uh are the smaller um cottages. Um, and one of those got gentrification in it, a little bit bigger, but there's there's gentrification arranged in that that concept around a shared green space. Oftentimes, they end up having parking around the exterior. Um, so, you know, you you obviously, you don't ride in to the center and and pull into a driveway. So there's either a common parking lot up to the side or there's rear access um to the units from a loop kind of drive.
So like those little camp houses up at Winston-Brattle, the small ones, or like the ones up in Dumberston, those little camp
I think that's a bit more
I'm just trying to get
more primitive and can't be than the actual residence.
Yeah, I'm trying to get an idea of how they look. Just single room occupancy is just
Well, maybe this isn't too far from S D circle?
Yeah.
Yeah, the 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 building in S D circle would be about this size. Um, particularly if you sort of, when we went out there and looked at them, if you think about the sort of, you know, some of them have been had an onto over the years, but certainly if you think about what they started, the form they started in, they definitely would fit into that category.
Uh-huh.
And they were powerful, you can just point out with all the vehicular access in the center there.
Mm-hmm.
But similarly, they they, you know, when they were built originally, they probably had more green space in that center.
Right, they weren't thinking of the more influx of people.
Look, Gary, I think you're um, you know, you're thought of the Dumberston K A way. They have the cottages that are kind of online there.
Yeah, right.
That's a good one. Those are pretty small. Um, just to give an idea of nine hundred square feet, so in one of Steve's memos, he points out that the vegan restaurant, Vegan AF on Canal Street, uh, has a footprint of about a thousand square feet. So you're talking more that size than than
Ah, okay. Did you know when Westby, two up in Westby, they have those little cabin houses too, that size?
Yeah, and these are, those are quite small too.
Gotcha. Okay, it's not like a tiny house type of thing, okay.
Yeah, there's actually, um, one, a a little touch, because it went into, uh, an indoor lot in Berry City, and they did put that home in using the sort of cottage, um, E V option. But I would say you're probably much more likely to see to see these buildings that are gonna be in the six hundred to nine hundred square foot footprint range rather than, you know, the four hundred.
But just to be clear, on your, on your kind of cottage court templates here, you have maximum building footprint and maximum building height,
footprint range.
but you don't have minimums, so Gary, if you wanna put in one of those.
Right.
Yeah.
Then you could.
Just trying to get something.
Assuming the building code allows.
Right, the regulations allow that also, is that something we can put in there also, Brandy, so?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the beginning of what you said.
Well, just getting like the minimum, you know, Tom was saying, basically.
Oh, I'm not advocating, I'm personally not advocating for.
Well, no, just, I'm just, I guess that's what I was trying to get at, basically, um.
So the the question of what the minimum allowable sizes for residential unit in Vermont is always a bit fraught
Right.
uh, because of the way building code is not really fully, um, enacted.
Right.
And building code itself often doesn't doesn't really have an actual hard number on the minimum.
Hmm, right.
Um, it's because of how it goes about measuring it, you have to be able to have certain things to to meet code, to be considered a building unit, is, I think the general sense of it is, it's really hard to do that if you're much less than a hundred and fifty square feet, maybe, but there are units that can be done, you know, people below a hundred and twenty and stuff like that, so in places that ask codes, there's been a lot more, um, you know, universal building code for residential units, there's been a lot more debate around what this minimum size should be. Um, but, you know, the idea of needing to get a, you know, an area, you know, of a bathroom, you know, kitchen facility and bedroom into the footprint essentially, um, you know, you you're you're gonna find it very difficult, I think, to get it mushed down a little more, I think.
Right, I would be looking to.
It actually needs those those requirements.
I will look into the endorse this, this, this to, uh, maybe consider if that's something extended purview of regulations that we can investigate and maybe incorporate somewhere in there, if if we can.
But I don't.
Because the way the regulations are changing constantly, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that you really need to 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 specify the minimum, you know, the the question of code will resolve itself if the proposed project needs to meet code. So, you know, like that project I mentioned in Berry City, they were able to to basically make a court for tiny homes, um.
Right.
You know, on a fairly small, you look at Corwaker, indoor lot, um, in a neighborhood there, I think they put personal units in there. Yeah. It's very, I I I can't remember, I have to hold that back up with me, but, you know, they they got a, they got a call through. Actually, I think they had, um, students from Norwich University built them. That's probably one of the programs there, and they they involved them in the townhouse zone project, actually. So the, um, last two pages, pages sixteen and seventeen, these are sort of the larger, um, apartment building options here. Um, they, the courtyard apartment, this is, this is a form that's less common in New England and more common in other parts of the country, um, where you basically have this U shape, um, uh, apartment building with a common court or green space in the center. Um, oftentimes the access is exterior, those are all units, so they need, um, in their up down units. So there there will be, um, stairway and and deck, access to second floor units. Um, okay, so that's, that form is allowed for, and then what's I'm calling the mansion apartment, back and forth, I'm going to department, then department, besides mansion apartment is probably a more accurate description. You know, it's basically, um, a building that could be a large, you know, very, a large single unit, you know, not that similar to a very large single unit home, um, but would have five to nine units. Obviously, there's historic examples of those in brown borough and there's there's contemporary versions that could be built as well.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I I hate to keep coming back to the the maximum height, but why is the courtyard apartment building two stories maximum and the mansion one three stories, just for, uh, and if you have that many units, you, how could you keep it within two stories?
So the, um, my understanding of the courtyard buildings, they're not particularly common, like I said, in in New England, is that they are a two story, um, form, and they do have that sort of second floor stair access that goes to the second floor units. If you were doing a three floor thing, I think it'd probably be harder pressed to do that exterior um, access, you might need to have some more of an interior, um, accessways and and stairs and and hallways and such, which they're not like that with. As means. But, yeah, so.
Do this assumes it an interior staircase then, or can there be?
The 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 mansion apartment does i- i- assume that there's gonna be interior access, um, for the unit. Um, but the courtyard doesn't, so.
That's a like U shape in there, that's, those are, um, staircases, basically.
Like a. Yeah, like a a deck or porch type structure, yeah.
Okay.
So that's similar to.
Yeah, I'm gonna have little three D helps of the form, because that'll make it a little clearer.
So Brandy, that's similar to the ones when we went by Bird Street, we went up that hill, looked across, it's like, that's sort of like the mansion apartment building type?
Um, yeah, we sent a couple of these on our, um, walk, a couple buildings that would fall into this this definition. Um, some of them, you know, when we were on the walk, we were discussing, you know, they were probably historically built as apartment houses. Others probably more as boarding houses that grew over time and are now semi units. Um, but you could also, you know, find what was once a very large, you've got examples of those in brown world, a very large single unit home that has since been broken up, um, into multiple units.
Well, like L block.
I think it's an example of the mansion apartment is the one on the corner of Pine and Oak Street.
Mm-hmm, right, exactly, so, well, L block, the way they have that set up, like where you're at, Tom, that building, and it has, it's sort of like
Uh-huh.
a Latino type of, it's it's beautiful the way they have it, so that's another, uh, uh, visualization as well also.
Yeah.
Those different types of mansions.
And what? Yeah, one of the things I liked about the three photos that are on them out of the page, um, seventeen, is that I suspect the interior floor plan of the center historic one and the contemporary one to the right are probably not incredibly similar, um, they're obviously very different, you know, eras, and and I would summarize point as well. Um, but, you know, when you actually think about the the interior organization of those buildings, they're probably pretty similar. Um, but that central, you know, entry and then stairway hallway kind of thing would be, it's kind of off that. Um, so I would do that, that building form could help to sort of figure out what, what are the possibilities.
So the one to the right is more up to the nineties, you're saying, basically, versus the one to the left is more fifties look?
I would say the the one in the center is is, you know, probably a nineteenth century example, whereas the one to the right, hallway in the right hand corner, is is probably built within the last twenty years.
Ah, okay.
So we're on the last page, um, Brandy, do you have any, um, kind of summarizing, but, you know, anything else you need from us, and also commissioners, definitely get your your words and comments and concerns or whatnot?
So I think in terms of of wrapping up, um, so basically what I feel like I've been doing for the last two, um, meetings is is giving you some menu choices, um, to think about in terms of what kind of a package you want to put together um, and move forward with zoning changes, um, in supporting the physical housing, so we talked about zoning district change, and talked a little bit about boundaries, and you might want to revisit that a little bit more. Um, and now you have this, um, set of, uh, this approach, this this set of new provisions for the regulation. So moving forward, we have to talk about the N B A mapping and the zoning district boundary mapping probably will be moving. And then stitching all of this together into a package, so I guess what I would leave you guys with is is thinking through the options that we've looked at during the last two meetings. And, um, as we come towards the next meeting, kind of being prepared to say, well, you know, there are some things here that you are not comfortable with, you know, identify those, or things that you think need further work, or, um, there's your, your preferences and thoughts about what you want to take forward, um, into this revision.
Okay, yeah, good, good summary there. Um, I was thinking of to save time, I'd email you just later, something quick, but hey, I'm starting to say it right now. Um, the single room occupancy, um, which we have a section for describing the conditions, it's not actually permitted or conditional in any district, so.
So, um, to respond to that, uh, we we do allow it, it's just considered, uh, other specialized residential.
Oh, and that's in such abuse?
I think that's, Brian and I discussed that after, um, I know you had raised that question before, I guess we never circled back on that, but we're pretty sure that that's how that would be understood.
Oh, there's actually a use category called other specialized?
Yeah, so that.
And it's in the permitted or conditional, oh, I missed that, okay.
Yeah.
I think that would be sort of concatenating a few of our, um, I guess, section three oh four.
Oh. Oh. Well, if it only, if it if it only, um, um, includes a few things, maybe that thing should just be removed and those few things should be stated. Would seem clearer to me for people, for 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 all the town residents who read the land use regs to to clearly understand.
Yeah. So so Tom, if I I could give you a little point of clarity on that. Um, the reason there's a group category is that there's several things that fall under it, so there's S R Os, there's dormitories, there's other types of, um, supportive housing, you know, that can fall under that. So by having that broad, you know, other specialized housing category,
I see, yeah.
it it really means that we haven't left anything out. So, um, if we if we, you know, that's one of the concerns that I've had too carefully.
Right.
Um, finding those, um, I worked with Littleberry last year on their regulations, and because of how they had defined some terms in their use category, they were having difficulty permitting housing that came with support services. So, um, you know, even though there everyone agrees that would be nice and desirable to have a kind of like, you know, transitional housing with support services, um, they actually, because of how they had things defined, that wasn't permissible. Um, so this, I think one of the benefits of this umbrella is that it it it's generality actually ensures that a lot of things can fit underneath.
I see. Maybe we could just add a, add that term as a definition that says including but not limited to these things.
Yeah, got it.
Anyway, yeah, Dan.
Uh, yeah, uh, would anyone else find it useful, I I appreciate having, uh, the minimum of, uh, dimensions, you know, of the lots, but would anyone else find it useful to have it in acres as well? Cause, uh, I think it, for me, it's useful anyway, uh, a hundred, a hundred by a hundred and ten, for example, in the courtyard apartment building is about a quarter acre, so I mean, you know, that that's usually how we talk about, um, lots. I I mean, it's good to talk about the, you know, the actual, you know, shouldn't be, you know, really skinny and long, you know, it shouldn't be a strangely shaped lot or something like that, but, um, I'm just curious if anyone else would find that useful, or if that's, maybe it's already something you're doing with with your list of criteria, is it useful to have, you know, if it's a hundred by a hundred and ten, for example, could you put the number of acres in there, or?
What what do other commissioners think, real quick?
I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with that, bad language, I would think.
Yeah, I I think if it, does it mess the layout up, it would just take a few minutes with a calculator to figure it out.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's easy calculation in a way, but like, to actually directly compare, yeah.
Sure, right there, yeah. Cool, I could go either way.
I know, they're not exactly the same thing, though, because this is form based.
Mm-hmm.
No, I get, I I mean, I I understand, I'm just saying, you know, you have a minimum which is, let's say, a hundred by a hundred and ten, so you're essentially saying approximately a quarter acre.
And Gary is not gonna do less than eleven thousand square feet, right, by default, right?
So you want that beside that parenthesis saying this basically, or just have that language as a negative person could just do their own conversion, I I'm just.
Well, they, I mean, I guess the only, the only reason I can see it coming into play is if someone
Mm-hmm.
has a a lot that's, let's say, you know, uh, a a really skinny or a sort of a, you know, strangely shaped lot that that might have issues, um.
So there is a way which there's a definition of how width and depth are measured, and I have to go back and check and make sure the language is in the brown world, right, I think it is, and I I think it's an average, I have to double check on that. So if you did have one of the, you know, something with not a nice rectangle, um, if you had, you know, a triangle instead, like that,
Mm-hmm.
um, you would, you would be able to to figure out sort of where you are from from the average of where it's the widest, where it's the skinniest. Kind of difference.
Yeah, that that's fine, I just wondered if, I mean, for sake of comparison and application of what you're talking about, someone might tell you, hey, I have a quarter acre, you know, for example, you know, it's, you know, strange, or, you know, anyway, just thought it might be useful, uh, just to save me the calculation, basically.
Well, you could put it in in one of the tables as an example for us going forward, Brandy, and we could see what it looks like, right? And decide then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, are we are we done with this for now?
Yeah, I mean, anything else we could just forward to Brandy, or Sue, what do you?
Yeah.
What do Sue?
What do Sue, yes, you're so quiet, Sue.
Yeah, so.
Okay, we'll see you next month, Brandy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work, thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
See you after Thanksgiving.
Okay, moving on. If we are going to apply for the fiscal year of twenty three municipal planning grant, we should make a decision at this meeting, um, because the application deadline, um, you know, assuming staff will be able to fill it all out and get to it, is, I think, December first, so, um, that's why it's up next on the agenda. We talked about it a little bit in past meetings, I just tried to summarize the few things that we talked about, you guys saw that in that little memo I sent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where I listed pre-permitted missing middle housing designs, um, some sort of purchase of development rights or easements of title or property for creating housing. Uh, we talked about potentially creating an alley to create, you know, more kind of frontage, or, um, purchasing for resale, um, undeveloped portions of developed lots, or selling off town owned lots that are near that kettle pond that Steve mentioned, between Wilson Woods and Marlboro Ave, um.
Can I clarify, Tom?
Sure.
I think, I I just wanna make sure we don't construe it as selling off.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I mean, yeah, that was my wording, so.
Yeah, yeah, just so that the the public doesn't get the sense that the proposal is to just have a buyer sale of
Thank you. Oh, okay, yeah.
town real estate, I was more looking at feasibility potentially of of, um, whether that's an appropriate site for housing to be, uh, maybe having an R F P for housing projects in in the future.
I see, yeah, thanks for that clarification.
Obviously with a with a public in. Obviously with a, with a public input process in accordance with law.
Yep, thank you, so I'm, I'm less knowledgeable and I'm sloppier with my words, so thank you very much for that clarification. And the other one was possible to see if it's financially feasible approaches to stacking, you know, other functions, whatever they may be, onto or with parking lots. And a climate action plan, we talked about that a little bit last year around this time. What do people think? About those or any other ideas or taking a break?
I like the pre-approved designs. I mean, if only to just start double down on missing middle. You know, I think it, it shows a real commitment from the town to what we want and trying to lower the barriers from, for small-scale developers to create exactly what Brandy was just showing in her, her memo.
Others? Dan?
Yeah, on your third bullet point, for studying, basically using parking lots, is, is that inclusive of tiny houses and RVs and that kind of thing? Or are you talking about building structures above parking lots or is that kind of part of the study?
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't really know too much, you know, I know there was that proposal with the Harris lot and we'll see what comes of that and, you know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, just, you know, it could be solar panels, it could be a park or garden raised up above a parking lot, you know, I don't know. It could be a roller rink in the basement underneath the parking, I don't know. I just, you know, I see especially downtown parking lots kind of being underutilized space. And I've seen some instances around the country and world where they're used for more than just parking and it doesn't seem to hinder the parking, so it just seems like a way for efficiency, but it doesn't seem like we're, we're moving or that, you know, it's difficult to do those things. And I don't know, maybe some specialized consultant could actually look at Rattleboro and, and come up with real, real workable, feasible things. That's just my thought, but I don't have any real solid leads. Yeah, Sue.
So I'm gonna be a white blanket. And I'm gonna say with the first, or sorry, with the second and the third, I don't feel like we have enough time to pull that out. We haven't had sufficient discussion with the select board and I'm not going to feel comfortable bringing forward something that, you know, that we really haven't been in conversation with and that they haven't identified other than that Harris lot. So, and in terms of, you know, purchasing easements or development rights, the municipal planning grant, you know, we just, it's not going to have that funding in there. So I think that's part of a larger budgeting discussion with the select board. And I can't think of any of our plans that kind of lay that out right now. So the second and the third are really kind of not, kind of non-starters for, for myself and the department at this point. In terms of a climate action plan, I think, you know, that, that's going to be a staffing thing as well that we're going to need to speak with a sustainability coordinator about if that's something that, that you want to work on. So, you know, that, that's a possibility, but I think that there needs to be some work done there. I'm not sure that we're ready to go with something like that. There could be, you know, a piece of a climate action plan that maybe could be, could be funded by the municipal planning grant to get us ready for a larger climate action plan. So again, you know, time is, time's probably a little tight on that, but we could, we could probably do something with that. The pre-permitted housing designs is something that, you know, we've been talking about in the department as a priority for us. I'd be interested in exploring that. We've had, you know, we need to figure out exactly the level of designs. We've spoken with two local architects to kind of get a sense of what it might cost. I'm not sure how many designs we can get out of the municipal planning grant without finding some additional funding to put towards it. And it depends on, you know, are we getting into structural, are we getting into, you know, some other aspects of the designs? But I think it's, it's definitely something that we could try to, you know, pull off in the next couple of weeks, take something to the select board and, and give that a shot. And then I'm gonna throw one other wrinkle in. There is a larger grant called the Better Connections Grant that's going to be released, I think, in December with applications due in March. That is a lot of master planning around housing and complete streets, those kind of things. You cannot have both a municipal planning grant and a Better Connections Grant at the same time. We could think about Canal Street and having a more specific complete streets plan to take to construction. The walk bike plan is, you know, definitely has, going to have recommendations about Canal Street. It's going to need more work before anything can be built. So that could be one potential funding source to look for for that. But what we can't have, as I said, both the municipal planning grant and the Better Connections Grant, they're both from DHCD and they only allow one, so that's the wrinkle.
Commissioners, people who haven't spoken, Prudence?
I mean, I guess I would like to, I would like to see us implement the bike walk master plan recommendations. And so, you know, to the extent that the Better Connection Grant would do that, I'd be more in favor of, of going for that one. And then the other thing is just, I think there's going to be some work involved to get approval for these land use regulation changes that we're, we've been working on for the last few months too. So I just want to make sure we don't try, you know, don't stack up too much. You know, because that'll, that'll go on into next year, you know, that work will go on into next year, but.
I see Dan's hand up, but he already spoke and, but I'll, I'll call on you after, because I know Sue added a whole bunch of info. There's Gary and Todd, Gary?
Thank you.
Todd, go ahead, can I speak?
I, I, fine, thank you.
Gary?
So I guess, what I'm understanding, I guess, most of this stuff within reality, we're not going to get to, it's near that time in December, so what's obtainable, I guess, we can do that, we can bring to select board, that's going to be something that's going to be saying, hey, this is going to be an action plan that can take action right away versus the stuff that's going to take, go into the backburner until next year or whatever. Since there's other grants coming down, which is great. Looking at, there is a, a lot on the plate. So what is digestible, I guess that's the question, Sue, at this time, that's, that's, we can say, is urgency, we can get this done. I mean, listen to what Prudence says, that makes a lot of sense too, because there's a lot of stuff right now. We, we brainstorm quite a bit, so I guess the reality is maybe one or two things is that wet towel's out there now.
So I think, I think, you know, the pre-permitted missing middle, I think, you know, that is something that implements the housing action plan, it furthers the land use regulations. Yeah, there, there's definitely going to be some public outreach that would be required, but, you know, that could be a charrette or something to help with the architect coming up with designs that, you know, the community likes or something like that. So I think that, that is something that's digestible and could be viewed favorably. Don't know how competitive it will be and again, I'm a little bit concerned about the amount of funding that we would have to put towards it. But that is, that's something that's digestible. And then, you know, the, the Better Connections Grant would be coming a little bit later, maybe when we're done with, you know, getting the land use regulations adopted. It's really more of a planning study, so I know that that's not as exciting as kind of an implementation, but it would be getting us to where we need to go, probably to get construction funding for primitive changes.
What Tom was talking about down, what was it, the parking garage down in that area? Weren't they, the select board, they were looking at doing something down there? Well, I don't know if it was the last meeting anyway, if I'm not mistaken, weren't there?
Yeah, but these, these grant funding, I don't think that these, I, I don't think either of these would be appropriate for that.
I'll just, Todd, unless you have anything?
No, thank you.
I'm definitely leaning towards the, the pre-approved housing because of the, you know, we rely on staff so much and that's what they're vouching for, or that's what they're have time and enthusiasm for. But also, you know, we've done a lot of plans and this is as kind of implementory as, as we can get. Well, except for purchasing development rights easements and titles. But this is, you know, really, really helping people get housing, potentially, so. I hear, I hear the thing about, you know, not, you know, waiting until we finish some of the work to then, you know, to do the complete streets thing, but I feel like this will help kind of put a cap on all of our housing work that we've done, so. Dan?
Yeah, I just wanted to raise the possibility that we consider, and I don't know if anyone's considered this already, the, the consortium option in the municipal planning grant. I, I, I know there's been some discussion of the advantages of what they're doing at Winston Proudy and Omega Optical between here and Guilford essentially. And for example, for example, I mean, it could be another municipality to, to consort with in a consortium. But, you know, I, I just wanted to bring that up because it's a little bit more money. It could be, you know, something that's a little, I know it's, it could be outside of what we're talking about, but it could certainly be housing-related if it worked with Guilford.
Would staff have time to, to figure that out with another municipality?
Probably make a couple of quick phone calls. Some of those small towns, though, it's really just volunteer planning commissions, so it might be a little bit tricky, but I would start with the fundraising on the mission and see if it's quarterly bid.
Now, Dan, Dan, are you talking about the pre-approved housing designs or just some other potential project? Oh, you're.
You know, to be, to be honest, I don't know, I mean, I, I, I understand the need for pre-approved housing, you know, but I'm not, I, you know, it, it doesn't seem like, well, actually, according to what their criteria, I was just looking at it, something about urgency, right? I mean, obviously, housing is urgent, but having pre-planned units, you know, I'm not, I don't know. It, it's something that, anyway, just doesn't seem like a, like that's an urgent need because it could be, you just find plans, you know, that are already existing. So, you know, the urgency, I think, of coordination, for example, with Guilford, which everyone seems to think, wow, that's a great idea, we'll have this corridor with Winston Proudy and, you know, the whole new housing issue, new housing opportunities. You know, I just think it would be worth sussing out, okay, you know, what would that look like? What, what is the, is there going to be the need for more interaction between, you know, the two municipalities?
So the Delta Campus is actually in Rattleboro, so it's all Rattleboro that they've been talking about there. I, I don't think, I don't think there's enough time remaining to kind of figure out a project with Guilford. I think, you know, I really feel better about, you know, reaching out to neighboring towns and saying, what do you think about this? Would you be interested in doing it? Would you benefit from it? With the pre-permitted housing designs? And then the only other thing I'd say about the pre-permitted designing, designs is that, you know, there is a cost to development, so, you know, getting some of these soft costs, you know, taken care of can maybe make homeownership or small-scale development easier for people. So that's kind of where we're coming from. South Bend, Indiana has some, has done some neat work. And then a community that Stacey is familiar with in Texas, Bryan, Texas have as well. I think that the state, you know, I think the state would be interested in, I think that this could be replicable, replicable, you know, and kind of transferred around the state too. So I, I think it makes a good project in that way. Is it as urgent as some of the other projects that might come for the state? That I don't know.
Steve, you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say if we were thinking of the consortium aspect with regards to the pre-approved housing plan to include Guilford would mean being able to theoretically get them to consider more ambitious housing ideas for the part of their town that is serviced by our water and sewer system. So I think that's potentially a serious opportunity for real housing infill that, that's outside of our jurisdiction, but would be a nice way to maybe help a town with far less governmental capacity be able to have a really unprecedented opportunity.
Yeah, and I added that Canal Street was brought up and obviously Route five going out to Guilford is essentially the, you know, the corridor and there's already projects happening, but it'd be great just to be able to, you know, actually coordinate what's, what's going on, you know, rather than just kind of letting it happen. That's kind of my thought on it. I don't, I have no idea how it would work to, to pull that together and so I'm just putting it out there as a question really. But yeah, it seems like, to reiterate, you know, it, it seems like there's some opportunities there.
So we've got this new possibility in the mix. Prudence?
I guess I'm a pre-permitted, I'm a little confused about them. So they're just, they're housing options that we're saying that people build them? That they already meet our, our zoning requirements? It just seems like when you're designing housing, it depends so much on the lot that's going on and so on. And so I, I just, I don't know how useful that would be to have up-the-shelf plans.
I think if you think of it like, you know, Sears kit housing, that there's some around town, you know, that you can go one place. I mean, a lot of our public housing, you know, Melrose Terrace and, and, you know, the high-rise and stuff, you know, there, there were plans that had had in place so that they didn't have to reinvent the wheel every time and, you know, so they could save money. So that's, that's the idea. Of course, there's, there's going to be some site constraints, so how far do you want to get into the structural of it, you know? I think that's something we'd have to dive into in like the next week. Because if it is on a sloped lot, you know, the basement might be different than. I'm not an architect, so I've just talked with a couple.
I think also, you know, even if it's not just like picking it up off the page and plopping it on the lot, it does decrease some of the money that a developer would spend if they could start with a plan and then maybe, you know, they need to have an architect help modify it a little bit that they already know that those plans will be approved. So, you know, whether it's cutting a thousand dollars off their, you know, bottom line or ten thousand dollars off their, you know, it's, I think, any little bit counts.
And, and would these plans not just have, have plans that are acceptable to our land use regs but also to the state's building codes?
Yeah.
Right? So, but, but this new idea that, that, you know, Dan started bringing forward about some consortium with corridors into, you know, for housing into Guilford or Hinsdale or whatnot. I mean, is this, if, if we were to, you know, go for that right now, like, does staff know what we're talking about and have an idea? And could they create some application? I mean, I'm just hearing about this now, so if the, the idea isn't fully formed in my mind, oh, Sue, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I don't have a fully, I don't, I mean, I, I understand the Winston Proudy Delta Campus connection. I've been involved with that kind of committee work, so I do understand that. You know, the Route five corridor, not so much. You know, I guess I'm, I'm not understanding other than from a transportation, an active transportation perspective. That one I'm not seeing currently. I do have serious concerns about the amount of time we have left to pull together a grant and try to coordinate with Guilford. I don't know, you know, I don't know their planning staff. So, you know, I think that's something that we can put on the list and revisit it next year. So, you know, I think that's something that we can put on the list and revisit it next year for sure with more time and thought given. I mean, we do have two projects on. We're gonna, the department's gonna have a major, you know, floodplain restoration project that we have going. So I'm not necessarily for looking for new and different ideas other than pulling things out of our existing plans, but I know what's coming up.
So I see two hands up. I don't know if it's going to, you know, be sticking with this, this issue back and forth, but I wonder if a motion can be made and we can, we can vote it to decide what to do. And that could be someone who has their hand up and it's Sarah first, but you can speak to something else too if you want.
I just had a question about what the staff feels are the matching capacity could be. So, you know, if it's the max grant for single municipalities only twenty-six thousand four hundred, we could theoretically match that fifty percent, but I'm just curious, like what?
Yeah, probably out of our, probably out of the department budget, you know, I could probably, probably pull together another ten thousand that would follow over two fiscal years.
Okay.
Dan?
Thank you.
Dan?
Dan's looks frozen.
Oh, this was going to, I was going to say very good, very good posture and composure.
Make a picture of it.
Not scratching his ear at all or?
Put that up on the painting right up there. Yep, we can hear you, sir.
Just barely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to maybe also add to the mix. The Better Connections Program doesn't seem like a really good opportunity. It could be, you know, getting into, I mean, new territory, but I think if you were to extend what was already discussed about, you know, let's just say Route 5 or Canal Street, that could be a really good, if you've already got materials that could go into that, but I don't want to add to the burden of, you know, starting from scratch. But maybe we could weigh the possibility of doing the Better Connections rather than municipal.
Someone feeling inspired to make, make a motion that might resolve?
Fill in the itch?
Can I ask one more question?
Yep.
What is the ratio of our current projects that we have open that are planning versus like implementation?
Well, they've all, they've all kind of been.
So we've got land use rights, which is implementation. We've got the, well, the floodplain restoration will be implementation on coming. The walk-by plan is definitely planning. I've got another bike lane project that's implementation. So, you know, we definitely have implementation projects on. Yeah, I mean, it's not listing all the stuff that we're involved with, but.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to vote.
Okay.
And I would second that.
Well, yeah, but what's the?
Oh, what's the vote, Sarah?
But how are you structuring the vote?
Oh, I don't know how to do a motion, but you can correct me. Motion to ask the staff to apply to municipal planning grant for the pre-approved permitted plans.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I second that.
Gary does. All those in favor of that one? Sarah, myself, Todd, Gary. All those opposed?
Oh, Dan's frozen, you know.
Dan, and Prudence?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, hopefully we can, we can get to those other things in the near term.
The good thing is, is, you know, if we apply, we're going to need to get select board approval. If we apply, we should know before the Better Connections Grant, if we're not successful, that we can turn around and do something else.
Yeah, you two could speak at the select board meeting against it. Maybe persuade them. There's, there's minority opinion is a valid thing, so. Sometimes.
Gary?
Okay, we only have four minutes. Someone could always make a motion to extend the meeting, but, you know, without that, our meetings end around eight o'clock.
So what's next on the agenda that we?
Well, we have all of those proposed land use regs, the fence height waiver, gas station signage, energy, DRB review criteria and accessory commercial units. There's no public for a public comment, but I will say that when the time comes.
There's something in the, in the chat box.
Yeah, who chatted there?
Is there a chat? There's a chat?
Oh, that was Prudence a while back.
Oh.
The lots that grants are not either or.
Yeah, so apparently our Mac is not charging, so we may lose audio right now in a moment.
Oh, so we might want to wrap up.
Oh, you think we will?
Yeah, I can't charge it for some reason.
Oh, darn. You mean like within seconds or minutes or?
I don't know. I'm just saying low battery, so.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
Do we need an extension?
That could be a twenty percent, that could be a three percent. The low battery, no?
Pick this, the first item next time.
Yeah, there will be. I mean, we could tackle the gas station signage real quick, but here we are at seven fifty-seven. No one's making a motion to extend and we hear that we're going to lose BCTV's audio, so.
If there was interest in the motion to extend, and I don't want to suggest that there should be, I'm happy to bring this laptop and get cozy with you three over there so that we can all speak into its microphone if that's amicable.
Oh, I see.
That's how the consortium feels.
Okay. So I will give a slow sentence to see if anyone's making a motion to.
And if Sue could give you the recording privileges, so you could also record on your end, that would probably work out well.
I actually already have a recording online.
Okay, that's going anywhere. Wait, I'm on my back of it, so I could still record on this. We are just not going to be able to have a speaker set up right here.
Okay.
So we need to vote for extension or?
We don't need to, only if someone wants to do that and make that motion.
How's the consortium feel?
But I think we know how they feel because none of them are speaking up.
Yeah, they're kind of looking like they got sand in their eyes.
Okay, so we'll have the formal public comment period where anyone from the public can speak or comment about something not on the agenda, but no public being here. That's it. But we didn't finish our business, so I can't just end the meeting. I need a motion to end it.
I'd like to motion that we dismiss and continue this next
Sounds good.
December.
I understand.
After I get back from my surgery.
A second? Todd seconds that? I'm curious if we have to vote or not. I don't think so. So that's it?
That's it.
Two minutes early?
Hey.
Wow.
That's a record. You guys be good after I get back from my surgery.
Wrap it, wrap it up for me, Gary.
Wrap it up?
No, I mean say the closing words.
Oh.
Thank you, everybody.
Live long and prosper.